Everything squared away but clear.
Just want to remind everybody that I was just whispering. Unspiritorily, I was looking at you but speaking to someone else. I'm gonna kill all the lawyers. It'll take a long time. I have stuff somewhere. Just not here.
Actually, it's an answer. She's having a hot restart.
It can sound like it's getting her nails done.
So now, but I have a pause and apparently they sort of zap you.
Do you have a plant in the basement?
No, no, she's something tactical.
Right, so don't they usually then follow a basement or something?
No, apparently no. They're gonna restart it.
Yeah, well, I'm so.
I actually was guilty of saying that.
Just again, just a reminder.
We're just waiting for Councilman Mitchell and then we'll handle it.
I just talked about my wife's heart search.
Doesn't mean we can't talk.
Is she doing that?
She's having it tomorrow, so.
Oh, okay. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Well, good luck to her.
Yeah, yeah, well, me too, because I'll suffer.
Cut, 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 words. Cut, cut, words. This council meeting is called to order in accordance with the open public meetings law. This council meeting of Tuesday, September 6th, 2022, was included in the list of meetings published in the Courier-News and Star Ledger. A notice of this meeting was placed on the bulletin board for our hall. A copy of this notice is available for public and a copy of the statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Dennis Sullivan.
Here.
Council members, Granville Brady.
Here.
Tom Mitchell.
Here.
Gina Stravick.
Here.
Roger Vroom has excused us from the meeting. Fred Weed.
Here.
Randy Pips.
Here.
Please turn in the flagpole and remain standing. What would be justified in the United States of America into the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all? I'd like to open tonight's meeting not with an individual moment of silence, but for a collective moment reflecting back 21 years ago this coming weekend. The 9/11 tragedy which touched not only the people that day, but continues to touch people's lives today. First responders, families, friends, community members. We will have a formal presentation at the county memorial this coming Sunday at 8:50, 8:46, I believe. But I'd like to open tonight's meeting with a collective reverence of all those who suffered on that day and continue to suffer today. Victims of 9/11. Thank you. One set of minutes to approve on August 15th.
Come on.
Second.
Council members Granville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
abstain.
Randy Pips.
Yes.
All right, we have departmental reports and notices as listed. We need reports. We'll start to roll up with Councilman Mitchell.
Okay, the National Park Service has awarded $7 million in grants to commemorate the nation's upcoming 250th anniversary. And this includes $500,000 to the Wallace House and Old Dutch Parsonage. The wrought iron fence surrounding the gravestones of the Old Dutch Parsonage needs to have rust removed and to be sanded and repainted. The friends of the Wallace House and Old Dutch Parsonage are looking for a competent professional to do this work. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Brady.
Yes, Your Honor. One of the least popular things that's happened in town in a while was the Somerville DMV office. Well, I had an opportunity to visit the DMV office last week, the worst day of the week, by the way. And I spoke with the new manager. My initial impression was that the office is efficient, patrons are processed quickly, and the staff was very polite. The manager told me that the average processing time is seven minutes. And hopefully many of the problems we had with the former director and her staff have been resolved. And they were very cooperative, very nice to talk to. So just if you ever have a chance, not just for official business, but you can go in there and meet with the manager. He's a very nice fellow that seems to have been very much in control of it. And the parking seems to have any issues. There is not much of a problem right now.
One thing we do have to remember, that DMV office is still on restricted transactions. They're not doing the full service.
Well, let's see if we can keep it restricted.
And if and when that changes, we may have to revisit that whole initiative. So, you know, for now, it's a snapshot. Let's see where it takes us.
I'm also pleased to report that the roadwork on Lori Drive, the way Lisa Terrace and Rhino Street was completed last week. And the roads are in excellent condition. So if you want to drive over them, I went past my house and I'll be happy to wait. Finally, the New Jersey American Water Company is scheduling several community meetings related to the November referendum to sell our sewer system to them. We're going to give you more details on the borough website, but there will be a community meeting at 7 o'clock on the 20th at Lincoln Hoes. And another meeting on the 29th at 7 o'clock at the American Legion for anyone interested in coming out and finding out what this is all about. I've also asked our sewer engineering firm, TMM, to give a short presentation, hopefully at our next meeting, on the state of our sewer system and the cost we might anticipate if we retain ownership. You'll recall, ex-Mayor Gallagher was concerned that we didn't offer options. And I think it's important for voters to know what the cost would be, what the issues would be between the sewer system being sold to the water company and us maintaining it. As you know, New Jersey American Water has offered a $7 million to buy the system and pledges an additional $9 million in infrastructure improvements. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Ms. Trump.
I'm happy to announce that we received a $127,000 grant for the riparian tree planting in the riparian zones along Peters Brook. Kevin and I were able to put a nice application together to the State Forestry Department. And we were, went through a grueling Zoom meeting, only to be told that we received the grant. So $127,000 to be spent one year from actually today. So we're looking forward to that project. So September 20th, the Environmental Commission has their certification training. So believe it or not, they need to maintain certain CEUs to do their appointed positions and keep us part of the community forestry program with the state. So September 20th, they are going to have a walk with the certified tree expert, who will help actually coincide with this grant, allow us to determine tree species and planting and so on. So anyone's welcome to attend. We'll be meeting at 5:45 at ship to do the walk. And then put on your calendars, October 9th, the Salem Oak Tree is going to be planted. That's the seedling from the 600-year-old tree from Salem, New Jersey, that was acorns were harvested, planted by the forestry department. And we have a nice ceremony that's in the works with the Girl Scouts and the Vanderbeer Choir. This is how we promote the Vanderbeer School is going to have children come and sing. The Girl Scouts and hopefully Tom will get the Boy Scouts involved as well in the program. So October 9th, 1:00 p.m.
Location.
The Wallace House.
Wallace House. As well it should be.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Lee.
Yeah, the only thing I have to report tonight is we now, I believe it's live, and Kevin can correct me if I'm wrong. We now have a portal on the borough website to report potholes. What would you have to do is you include the location of the pothole, a picture if able, and any other info. So if it's between, if it's on Main Street between High and Vanderbeer, if it's on Main Street between Eastern and Vanderbeer, you state that, and then we can get that going. Because, you know, we, Mayor, as he often says, it takes a village. So let's, you know, if you have a pothole, let you know. Go on the website and we get it fixed. So a whole portal. Pothole portal.
Not only does it take a village, it takes black.
Yes, so pothole portal and if you want, you know, I'm always walking the streets, so we could have a pothole patrol. So.
Possibilities are endless.
That's all I have.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor.
Talk that.
The DSA Board has authorized a recruitment agency to assist the Board in selecting its new, its next executive director. As you know, Natalie Panero will be leaving the DSA sadly. However, she will continue to work with us through the transition period. The planning of all the events for fall, the winter are moving along extremely well. And we look forward to continued success over the next several months.
All right, thank you. Just a few small items. Some have been mentioned before. We have the two sewer meetings coming up. Another ribbon cutting to put on your calendars, folks. October 13th is a tentative date for groundbreaking of the new emergency services facility on Gaston Avenue at the site of the former bakery. Time and details to be determined, but we're looking right now at October 13th. And there'll be more information as we get closer. Couple of months ago, I asked Kevin to write letters to not only the state of New Jersey DOT, but to the Somerset County, requesting the reduction on roads on by those entities to 25 miles an hour so that we would have a consistent speed limit here in Somerville of 25 miles an hour for each street. No action took place for quite a while. I'm pleased that within the last two weeks, I did receive letters back from both those entities. And the letters, although Kevin Kervanroam didn't offer a timetable, they included the phrase "any timely matter." So in government speak, that could be tomorrow, it could be next year. We're going to effort that to make sure it's done quickly. I'm glad they didn't do it in the summer because we have artificial counts when school's not running. Now that schools are back, we'll get, I think, a better traffic count, especially on Route 28 in front of Vanderbeer School. So Kevin, let's see if we get a call from them about when they're going to do those counts. And if we don't hear back in our timely manner, we'll reach after them again. In conjunction with that, pops, this is my annual schools open reminder. Schools open today, so there will be more youngsters from ages four to 18 on our streets, including around the high school. Just because they're high school students doesn't mean they're any more careful than our kindergartners in crossing the streets. And I see a former graduate of the school nodding his head. And I was guilty of it myself when I worked there of not always being vigilant. But, you know, schools are open. We ask that we ask you just to be vigilant. All of our posts, Kevin, are in, I believe.
Yeah, we're actually taking, you know, we have an interim contract and we're taking it bids this week, actually, for course and guards for the remainder, for the next two years.
Right. Just for, you know, for the general public, please, just be careful. You're on your way to work or to the store. We've got kids who are focused on getting to school. They're not as vigilant as we would like them to be. Let's just, let's just all collectively protect our kids. And finally, I had a discussion with Kevin this morning about reopening of Borough Hall. And Kevin, you want to just give us a quick update as to where our discussion led us and what they're thinking is right now?
Yeah, so it looks like we're going to be open in the front door starting mid next week. We'll be on vacation schedules now. We're going to keep the tax office window open because that's been a popular hit and people seem to like that. So we'll maintain that, we'll maintain the ramps as well. So the building itself will physically be open, probably about the middle of next week. We have some signage to do and that'll be it. And we'll be, we'll be open, you know, normal hours through the front door.
Do we have any constraints on the duration of those ramps? Were they, since they were installed during COVID, is there a time at which they can no longer be used?
They're still considered temporary. They're not handicap accessible because they do have steps on them. When we had used them, we had heaters in the wintertime. I think the demand will probably, you know, slowly subside in the wintertime. And then eventually we'll remove them as needed. Right now, people seem to like that, you know, specifically for the taxpayers.
One thing to consider, we will be doing some rehabilitation work on the front steps and the exterior vestibular.
Well, that's the concern as well. So in case we do have to close the front door as well, the ramps are in place. So, you know, I'm saying, so if there's a need to close that front door because of the political treatments, of political work for the grants, then we saw things that we can operate in the aftermath.
Let's just make sure we have an ongoing update on the borough website as to if you're coming to Borough Hall, what to expect.
And is there going to be an interior information desk put in, or is that not?
Well, our goal is, and the Borough Council has authorized this previously, was to have. Initially, what happened was we were concerned was, it was initially determined that there'd be a security requirement. We had moved off of that for a couple of purposes. One of the historic nature of the building and so forth. But more importantly, now we're authorized to have a kind of a, I wouldn't say a concierge, but a concierge style type of employee out there. That so when you walk in the building, that employee will be able to help you with some things that you may not need to go upstairs for. But we're interviewing for that now. So the time cap was not going to work, you know, correctly. But that's the goal, is to put someone down there that's going to be able to provide some assistance, provide some direction. We have many people that come to the building that think we're the county. So we'll be able to stop those folks right in the beginning and advise. And again, it'll provide some level of security in the building as well. Because unfortunately, through retirements and vacancies, there's not a lot of employees in that. So again, with the individual offices, the way it's set up, so we're going to try to make it a little more, you know, a little more corporate so when you walk in, you get some immediate attention.
Okay. Then last thing I should have mentioned further on. We received a lot of grant funding in the last couple of months from the federal government, from the state. Kevin and I are going next Tuesday, I believe, to the park.
That's correct.
We're receiving $327,000. Or 325?
I want to say it's.
375?
375.
$375,000 from the Somerset County Open Space Fund. If you remember several years ago, the voters approved amending the open space initiative from the county to allow a percentage of that money to go into open space and park rehabilitation. The original open space was basically just to acquire space. And that worked to the detriment of communities like Somerville who had no open space for the county to buy and develop. So we argued for, you know, and successfully eventually, that some open space money could be used to go back to communities that already have recreational space. That's where this fund's coming from. So it's going to allow us to just about completely remove the bathroom and the pool and rebuild it from the ground up. That pool has been patched and patched and refetched, you know, a bazillion times. This will hopefully have it, and I believe some work's actually going to start now if we want to get it open for next summer.
Yeah, we did receive the grant. I and Jason Crass had come to the meeting already. And then the meeting is Tuesday is basically for the check presentation. But they, yeah, we started some work. Received a proposal from TMM to do some of the work. Some of the work is weather sensitive, so we'd like to be able to accomplish something before the end of the year. Because our goal is to come back next year and make application in the spring for the other pool. So, you know, the goal right now, the thought process is to get left open. For if luck was closed this year, luck would open next year and walk would be closed next year. That would be kind of the game plan. If everything works out, all the timing loss.
So again, it's encouraging that, you know, we sent a lot of money to Trenton, a lot of money to Washington, and a lot of money to Grove Street. And now, through a lot of hard work, you know, a lot of people's parts, some of that is returning back. And for us to fund a $375,000 project would mean something else equally important to get done. So I look forward to a ribbon cutting and maybe a barrel cannonball. It's only a three-foot pool, so I'll be careful. Maybe we'll take volunteers from some of us that have youngsters at the table. Maybe they can volunteer.
I'll pay for the cannon.
Yeah, right? But you'll, yeah, we will see work going on there. And the goal is to have a ribbon cutting on the first day of summer vacation next year. And that's all I have. No items for discussion?
Correct. We had a four-hour meeting. I think we were moving in at October 8th.
Yes. So we have a series of ordinances for introduction only tonight. And Kevin, before I open those, will all of these be able to be heard at our next meeting?
I believe so. I know we're a little time constricted by the.
Calendar, because we're only 13 days.
But I think Gina and I had this conversation, it seemed like a long time ago. But I think we did arrange for them to be able to make the schedule for the next meeting.
Yeah, they would definitely be on for the second meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, our first one is 2680-22-0906. Approving cottage fruit operator use in the borough of Somerville. Motion for introduction. Someone second.
Council members, I'm sorry, council members, Granville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pips.
Yes.
Kevin, does this have to go back to the planning board then?
It does, but I assure you, this one just, I think on, are you meeting Wednesday?
Would be next Wednesday.
Be next Wednesday.
Yeah.
So it'd be done.
They wrote it, so I can't imagine them making any changes to it.
But that's the procedure. Okay.
Yeah, that's the procedure.
Just make sure that Ms. Warren has it on the agenda.
Yep.
Okay. All right, our next ordinance for introduction. Amending Chapter 166, Section 51, entitled Yield Intersections to Delete Leeway on the Intersection of Lisa Terrace and Leeway. And to amend Chapter 166, Section 50, entitled Stop Intersections to Include Leeway on the Intersection of Lisa Terrace and Leeway. Motion for introduction. Someone second.
Council members Granville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pips.
Yes.
It took 50 words to say we're replacing the yield sign with a stop sign.
I feel like lawyers.
Got to love government. Amending ordinance 2674-22-0516. Staffing salary range for employee titles to be paid to certain officers and employees of the borough of Somerville. Motion for introduction. Someone second.
Council members Granville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yeah.
Fred Weed.
Abstain.
Randy Pips.
Yes.
Jeremy, that is enough votes for introduction.
Correct. It's 3 to 2, but I hope that.
311.
It just needs a majority of the time.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next order is 2683-22-0906. Approving and authorizing an amended and restated financial agreement by and between the borough of Somerville and 50 Kirby Avenue Urban Renewal LLC pursuant to NJSA 48, Call of 20-1 at SEC, a property located at 50 Kirby Avenue, also known as Lot 4.1 in Block 1, as shown on the official tax map of the borough of Somerville, located in the Kirby Avenue redevelopment area. Motion for introduction. Someone second.
Council members Granville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
No.
Randy Pips.
Yes.
Ordinance 2684-22-0906. Amending the bond ordinance number 2670, adopted by the Borough Council of the Borough of Somerville, New Jersey on April 4th, 2022. Someone second.
Council members Granville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pips.
Yes.
And as I said before, every effort will be made to have those on for the hearing and adoption at our meeting of October. No, September.
September meetings.
September 19th. 19th, thank you. All right. For the open public meeting section, motion to open to the public. Someone second.
Council members Granville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pips.
Yes.
Public session's open. Identify yourselves, name and address. And address your comments to myself.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Mateo Garcia, 171 Mercer Street. Mr. Mayor, I believe you were up last meeting, but I wanted to thank you for listening to comments that I've made about these cars at the speed off of 22 that come into Somerville. Rumble strips have been placed and they're wonderful. Residents, at least in my area of the town, really appreciate them. And they are noticing that the town is listening to their concerns. And it's really great to have them now that the school has started. So that's, I remember, I wanted to thank you for that. And also for the redevelopment of the basketball court on Mercer Street. As we know, that basketball court came into disrepair after Hurricane Ida, which was a year ago, a little bit more than a year. So I had the opportunity to speak with some neighbors, Mr. Mayor, that live on Green Street between Mercer and Davenport. But many of the residents there, the homeowners, they remain concerned about flooding. Of course, today we're draining a lot and the flooding season is right now. And they're wondering, as am I, what longer-term plans the town has in place or what the town is looking to do to solve the flooding issue. Some neighbors are under the impression that these floods occur every 10 years, perhaps, and maybe so. And so what happens in the next nine years after Hurricane Ida was a year ago? Some neighbors have asked if they are allowed perhaps to pour concrete around their property. I don't know if that's a solution, but that's just one idea that was thrown out there. Others have raised concern that flooding in Somerville has happened since Bound Brook, that repaired it. So if we can say, and some of that floodwater has started flooding to some of them. I don't know if that's true or not. I'm echoing some of the concerns because they're valid. Neighbors of mine in that part of town, homeowners, are worried every time that it rains and that there's flood season. And so I just wish to bring this up to this body, not because I don't believe that anything isn't being done. I'm sure that the town is looking into it. But perhaps for the town to give a little bit more apparent attention to that part or to any of the homes that are along the Brook or flood zones, so that they have better clarity as to what the town is doing. So that we see this as a village, right? We want to fix our potholes, but we also want to stop flooding. That's a big issue. And so I'm echoing that concern because I did speak to residents. And I don't want the town council, Mr. Mayor, to get into the impression that a lack of people here means that there's a lack of issues. Some people just can't make it to town meetings. And so I'm more than happy to provide some of this comment forward along. Along the lines of flooding, something that I've spoken about before and I heard in the whisper, is affordable housing. I just met with Representative Tom Allenowski at a campaign event and I had a chance to ask him about affordable housing at the federal level. And he gave a response, but he also points to the fact that a lot of it is at the state level and even the local level. So I've come here to the town council, Mr. Mayor, to ask that this town seriously consider looking at affordable housing or at least create a body or a committee that could focus on the issue. If I'm not mistaken, from facts poured out in this same body, in the same room, more than half the properties in Somerville are rent properties. And I'm not mistaken, something like 52% of them. That might mean that more than half of the residents in this town are renters. There's only one renter that I know on the town council. And I wonder if renters' interests are being represented. We have a lot of concern over property taxes, but I'm also concerned about the high rent and what can be done and whether or not this town is held under the control or influence of certain developers, or only a few. I don't know what the issues are. There are many. High rent is one of them. And I don't know the solutions, but I ask that this town at least create a body or a forum where these issues can be discussed and allow the town people, the people in town, to be able to address that issue. Because I believe it is an issue. I think more people in town would agree. Lastly, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just complain about a sign that fell, there's a street sign that says, Brook Stop. there's a street sign that says Brookside and Mountain Avenue that fell. If it could be put up, that'd be great.
It's on Mountain Avenue?
It's on Mountain Avenue, Mountain and Brookside, just it. So if it could just be repaired, that would be great.
Disgruntled high school students on their way to work, especially.
Perhaps, and that's on the matelotta side, not the public school side. So just want to point that out with the record. But I do hope, Mr. Mayor, that much in the same way that this body has listened to previous concerns of mine, that you please also consider the concerns that I raise now about continued concerns about flooding and affordable housing in this town. Thank you.
Thank you for your attendance and your comments.
Just a note, Mayor, I think.
This is public, but I will allow you to comment.
Yeah, Mateo, on behalf of the Environmental Commission, I would say that the Environmental Commission very much supports green infrastructure, and if we can look into town, it starts in everyone's backyard, doing the right things, but also if we could expand that into our billing codes, our ordinances and things like that, I think that that could be helpful down the road in eliminating a lot of flooding or extra water, that kind of thing. So little things that could make a difference in a lot.
Mayor, is that a spot?
It's not a discussion. I move to close the public session.
I agree. I'll take your comments offline. All right, the motion to close, move up. Second.
Counsel members Granville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell. Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne. I'm sorry. Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts. Sorry, I missed my list.
We have a series of consent resolutions. 273 is a pull for future discussion. Any more that council would like to discuss individually? 270, please. Okay, hearing no others. 269, approving the tax overpayment refund for 14 Davenport Street. 271, and authorizing the administrative to engage the services of Danker to assist with furniture solutions for the emergency services facility. 272, awarding the, authorizing a warrant of non-fair and open contract for the support of the audio and video systems, Millennial Communications Group, Inc., again, for the emergency services facility. 274, approving a road closure for East Main Street from Grove Street to Bridge Street on Sunday, September 11th, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the Jazz Fest. 275, accepting the 2021 municipal audit and execution of the group affidavit certifying the general comments and recommendations made by the auditor. 276, amending the hours of operation for the basketball court at Michael Left Park and pickleball and tennis courts at Henry Peter Vanderbeer Memorial Park from dawn till 9:00 p.m. 277, accepting a grant of $8,655 from the 2022 statewide fund risk control for general safety and risk management control. 278, approving Chapter 159 for statewide insurance fund, general safety and risk grant. 279, adopting the Somerville Borough Hall and Public Library Presentation Plan Update of March 2021 from HMR Architects. 280, approving an interlocal agreement for public health services with the County of Somerset and the Borough of Somerville Board of Health for years 2022 through 2024. 281, authorizing the sale of surplus property, being a 2007 Dodge Durango, in accordance with state cooperative pricing system. 282, accepting a grant and authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute agreement from Somerset County Open Space Trust in the amount not to exceed $375,000 for improvements to the Michael Left Park pool. 283, approving tax overpayment refunds. 284, adopting the title and job description of receptionist/administrative assistant. 285, authorizing an interlocal service agreement with the County of Somerset for emergency management services. 286, approving Chapter 159 from Somerset County Open Space Trust for improvements of Michael Left Park pool. 287, authorizing the sale of surplus property, 2015 Ford Taurus police all-wheel drive, in accordance with state cooperative pricing system. And 288, authorizing the sale of circles property, a 2015 Ford Taurus police all-wheel drive, in accordance with state cooperative pricing system. Motion on those amendments for resolution. Second.
Counsel members Granville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
All right, 270, accepting the grant of $5 million from the hazardous discharge site remediation fund, programmed through the New Jersey Economic Development Authority and the Department of Environmental Protection. Motion. Second. Tom, you have another question?
I had, I just wanted to comment on this. This is the second phase of our cleanup of the area